Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the commission meeting on December 5th, 2023. I call this meeting to order and will note a quorum of the members of the commission. Before we get started, I just would like to remind everyone, including myself, to silence your cellphone. And if you plan to speak today, public comment, if you'll just sign in on the sheet in the corner, that way we'll have your address and you won't have to say it publicly. All right, with that, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the consent agenda? All right, not seeing anyone. Are there any requests by the commission to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to regular, our regular agenda, and the first item is a presentation by the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. Bob Munt, good morning.
Good morning. I'm gonna kind of wing this because I can't remember which presentation I sent to you guys, so appreciate that, and I can control that from here, correct? Just scroll, okay, all right. So, good morning, my name is Bob Munt, I'm the president and CEO of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. We're one of the organizations that you fund for economic development here in the region, so thank you for your contribution to us. I want to talk a little bit today about kind of some of the things that we're doing right now at the Development Foundation, maybe a couple of things that we're looking to do in the future, so that you can kind of have an idea of where we're going. Three priority areas that we have at the Foundation, retention, expansion of our existing industries, that's of utmost importance to us because they're the ones that are already here, so we need to take care of them. Business attraction, land development, talent and workforce, most recently some housing and some redevelopment, really looking at what our role is in that whole housing arena. When we prospect, we have some profiles that we look after. One of those is kind of the larger warehousing and distribution facilities, that's because of Foundation Park and the fact that we have very large lots there in Foundation Park, so we look at large-scale manufacturing, large-scale distribution. Bio-pharmaceuticals, we really work with the Discovery District, the USD Discovery District, tech cyber entrepreneurs, another one of our markets, DSU, the Sanford Campus Downtown, those are kind of the areas that we target for that. We also target above-wage median jobs plus competitive benefits, and benefits are becoming more and more important as we kind of get into this very competitive wage environment. So we are really targeting some high-tech facilities and really high-skilled workers. Foundation Park, as all of you know, northwest corner of Sioux Falls, we have roughly 1,000 acres in Foundation Park. This is the outline of the TIF that you guys are familiar with. We've actually extended that a little bit farther to the north here, and so we've acquired some additional ground there, but you can see one of our latest tenants out there is a company called Share. They were down in Tee, they outgrew their facility there, they needed more space, and so this is where they're located there. We've also been utilizing the tax increment financing district that you guys approved here a couple of years ago. You can see here some of the dirt work that's been done out there right now. This photo's a little bit outdated, this is actually, right now, we have the roads in pretty much out there except for 259th Street. We have to make sure that that's graded down, we had to wait for the telephone utility poles, or excuse me, the electrical utility poles there to put in there, they were on back order, so it took us a little bit longer, but we're getting that done and we'll finish that out this next spring, so it'll have the roads and infrastructure all available, so it'll be called site-ready. This is Sumpire Park 8, which is on the northeast corner of Sioux Falls. We recently sold out on Park 8 East, what you see there is Park 8 West, there's a 50-acre piece kind of up here in the corner, about a 35 or 36-acre piece there, and a 33-acre piece down at the corner of Sycamore and Benson. That's, again, larger, larger tracts that we try to focus on. We don't want to compete with the private developers that have those smaller lots available, so we're really sticking to those larger types of lots. This is the National Guard Readiness Center, that's under construction out there right now, so you'll be able to see that driving up 229, this is eventually what that facility will look like. We also have purchased some additional property, I'm not sure if I reported on this last year or not, but we bought about 130 acres to the east of Interstate 29. We think we're going to develop that at some point in the next couple of years, we're kind of holding off to see what the economy does and how we see people prospects coming in and those types of things, but this is kind of a concept of what you might see there. So just a little report, some of the summary that we're, that we're kind of putting out there. Acres sold to date, 563 acres since 2018, 471 of that has been in Foundation Park, the other 92 has been predominantly up in the northeast, there's been a lot that was sold kind of out by Walmart as well, we used to own that as well. We've got about 119 acres remaining in the south portion of Foundation Park, which is south of the tracks, and about 370-plus acres north of the tracks, and about 123 in Park 8, and then the Steinecke property, which is the stuff east of I-29, about 110 acres there. We've got about two acres right now under option, we hope to close that out by the end of this year, and then the active acres that we have, and by active, I mean people have expressed interest in it, they've kind of written some letters to us, intent letters, those types of things, it takes a while to develop those, but about 76 acres is kind of under interest right now. So what does that mean? In 2017, that land was essentially ag value, today we have about $828 million worth of taxable property on those pieces of ground that we've sold, so we're significantly adding to the tax base up there in that area. It's about 5,300 jobs, so about 2,000 of those jobs, in all transparency, about 2,000 of those jobs are at Amazon, so they've got a lot of folks working in that building. So we also completed Phase 2 of the Marion Road Project, so you can see to the left there is actually south, and so that's coming from the existing Foundation Park to the north, and we've completed that over the tracks, and then most recently, the orange area there is essentially from the Renner Crooks Road down to what we're calling, we used to call Opportunity Drive, now we're calling it Memory Lane because somebody else took Opportunity Drive, so we had to change that. The center part in the middle, it's going to be a couple of years before we actually get that done because of the escalating costs that we're seeing, so it will probably be a bypass over the top of the railroad tracks, so we won't have to cross those on street level. We also handle talent and attraction programs, and so part of creating jobs is helping to fill those jobs with people, and so we have a lot of programs that are directed towards filling that talent pipeline, predominantly what we call our Talent Tower with the Tours, Talent Now, Draft Day, all of those are directed mostly at colleges, universities, and tech schools to try to get the graduates of those universities and tech schools, and to really look at Sioux Falls is a great option for them, and so we do a lot of things that bring those students here, that get them engaged in our community, that get them engaged in our businesses. Our latest program, Interns Sioux Falls, last year, we had about 300 interns from those colleges and universities and tech schools that essentially worked in our companies here with the option of those companies, then hiring them to come on full-time, or at least helping them to decide which direction they wanted to go within their chosen profession, so a lot of activity there. We're going to grow that to about 600 interns per year here in Sioux Falls, again, the more people we can get here and see what our quality of life is, I think the better off we are. We have some internal talent programs, Career Connections targets high schools, so we have about 12 high schools now, I think, that are involved with this Career Connections program, and that essentially immerses those kids into our companies to take a look at what they do on a daily basis, and what types of jobs within those companies that they might want to have an interest in. STEM is a junior high-type program, kind of a career exploration program, and then we have a couple of other programs too that we target differently-abled people, as well as the Second Chance Job Fairs with the Corrections Department and those types of things, and one of our latest programs is Upskill Sioux Falls, where we take existing employees that you have, and we help you to upscale them into higher-paying positions and probably more needed positions within the company, so we're partnering with the state and with STC to do that. So we had an example of that is truck drivers, they needed their CDL licenses, and so we were able to partner with them. That program has graduated about 120 truck drivers here over the last couple of years to help our companies find truck drivers. Business partnerships, again, just a few things that we do to kind of make sure that we're continuing to fill that pipeline, one of the exciting things here that we're doing is the Health Sciences Clinical Simulation Center out at STC. This will essentially double the capacity of STC to graduate nursing students, and we're trying to really build that particular center up, that's where the ZIL Center used to be, and now the Startup Sioux Falls is downtown, and we're hoping to open that up this next quarter, first quarter in 2024. Work Sioux Falls is a regional campaign that we've been really targeting some of the communities around us, the larger metropolitan areas, Minneapolis, Fargo, Omaha, Council of South Sioux City, to really get them to come onto our website, take a look at the jobs that we have available here, and possibly bring them into the area as well. Career Connections, again, we'll just run through this real quick, you can see there a lot of people involved in that, again, continuing to move that pipeline forward, here's our intern program. Upskill, again, this is the CDL truck-driving operation that we've been in, we're now looking at CNC operators, and we're looking at the nursing program as well, what we can do with the CNAs. Workforce marketing, again, just example of some of the stuff we're doing, this is the areas that we're marketing in, kind of, and the types of labor that we're really targeting, so healthcare, cyber tech, building skills trades, and manufacturing. These are some examples of our Work Sioux Falls program, these are the ads that pop up on people's screens when they cross over our fenced borders in some of these university settings, if you are familiar with geo-fencing, if you cross a border, basically, you get an ad that pops up on your screen, these are some of the ads that pop up on those folks' screens, so that we can, again, just get them to our site. This is what our site looks like once you get to it, it's got all of our employers listed there, they can click on the employer and go directly to that employer's site, so that they can click on all the jobs that might be available at that particular company. This is a video that I won't show you here today, but we have some videos that kind of highlight the quality of life here as well, and then the Falls Area Development Corporation, one of our newer corporations, again, we're trying to take a look at how do we, how do we take a look at infill-type housing here in the Sioux Falls region, and how do we look at older areas of town that might need to be rejuvenated, how do we look at old properties that might be able to be acquired and then turned into some more inner-city-type housing opportunities, more high-density-type housing, and really leveraging this a little bit with some of the money that the state has available for us to use for that housing, and really being creative on the ways that we can use that to generate more housing here in Sioux Falls. Couple of just projects that were, this is North Minnesota Avenue, we've acquired some of the houses kind of north of Good Sam, we want to do some high-density-type housing there that may look something like this, in that, again, creating that density closer to downtown and having the ability for people to live close to where they work. The Riverline District, another project that you've heard of, we're working on, kind of on the other side of the viaduct there on 10th Street, taking a look at how can we kind of re-envision that area to be more a part of the downtown, and really kind of solidify that southern end, if you will, of our downtown community. So just quickly, a couple of challenges that we're facing going forward, again, talent and workforce, it's really more than just people, it's a skills match and skills training, so we're really finding out, you know, there's people out there, but they don't have the skills that match the job that they have, so we're looking at training opportunities through a number of different outlets, childcare, childcare and eldercare, another thing that we're talking about locally, but also on the state level. Housing, we've talked about that a little bit. Honestly, the availability of land, industrial land, we're kind of looking forward as to what happens after Foundation Park, taking a look at contiguous land, taking a look at infrastructure utilities, all of those things that we're going to have to have in order to have another mega park-type thing, and so we're really looking at the capacity of our infrastructure and stuff that we have to work through that, and that's what that resource allocation piece means, really sewer and water capacity, how much sewer capacity we have, how much water is available, we may need to take a look at, you know, kind of shifting our prospects a little bit more towards some of those lighter water users as opposed to the heavy water users. Our opportunities, again, we're strong banking, finance, insurance, we're always, you know, pushing for those, this whole cyber and advanced technology area with some of the companies we have here, health and medical with the strength of Sanford, Navera, and some of the medical community we have, being at the intersection of two major interstates, again, that logistics and distribution makes sense for us, and then of course, manufacturing in the areas with CJ Foods, the Geese Manufacturing, some of the other more advanced manufacturing companies that we have and will have in the future, so that's kind of our market that we're shooting for right now, really taking a look at what's happening within, you know, what's happening within the world and what's happening within the country, and taking a look at what do we need to do now to prepare for that. So with that, the TIF that we established here a couple, three years ago, we've spent roughly 19 million within that TIF on all the infrastructure and stuff that we put in out at Foundation Park with the roads and the grading and all that kind of stuff, we've got more to spend this next year as we're kind of finishing out what we're doing up there, and so we'll continue to give you reports on that and what we're doing with those dollars and how they're flowing as well. So with that, I'd take any questions that you might have, I hope I didn't go too far over.
Yeah, you didn't hear the gong yet, it was coming, but you, yeah, you just barely got in under the wire.
Didn't get the hook.
Any questions for Bob's great presentation? Commissioner Kipli.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, thanks, Bob, for being here. The context going into 2024, I'm the liaison to planning and zoning, and we're looking at doing a new comprehensive plan, just the growth, especially north of Sioux Falls, I think has just changed the landscape such that we need a little reset button of what, how do we look forward there? So what do you think if, in, over the next 18 months, we're redoing a comprehensive plan and we need some stakeholders at the table, what do you see as the collaborations between your organization and maybe Tyler Torridson's Sioux Metro Growth Alliance was here just in the last week or two presenting his side of the story and more of the rural areas, and then all those rural communities, how can we better collaborate over the next year on something like a comprehensive plan for planning and zoning in some of these areas?
Yeah, I think, you know, from a Sioux Falls perspective, certainly, we're probably about as far north as we can go from an infrastructure perspective, so I think the focus is west at this particular point in time, and maybe kind of town to the southeast as well, the way it sounds. As far as, you know, working with some of our communities around us, we have always done that and will continue to do that, and we'll probably do more of that right now, because as we look at housing and as we look at the availability of land and infrastructure and those types of things, places like, you know, Hartford and Del Rapids and some of the other cities that are fairly close to us, Tee, Harrisburg, you know, those are really going to start to become more of our package on a regional basis, so working with Tyler and SMGA and ourselves and kind of identifying, you know, where are the, where are the big opportunities that we have, where are some of the smaller opportunities that we have in some of the smaller communities, not just in industrial development, but in housing development as well, and potentially some retail development in those areas as well.
Other questions? Great presentation, we appreciate you taking the time to be with us.
Thank you very much, appreciate all of your time, and thanks for being public servants, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item eight, which is to authorize the Equalization Department to purchase a 2024 Chevy Malibu. Chris, good morning.
Commissioner, Chris Lula, Equalization Director. Yeah, we're just here, we approved in the 24 budget for a position and a vehicle, and the position has already been filled here in '23, we filled that a month and a half ago, and I'm happy to say that appraiser has already met all of his state qualifications and is officially technically, untechnically certified, he's just got to wait his year now in timeframe to get his official state license, but all accreditation has been met, so very fast, again, very pleased with that, so now with that brings the vehicle that we're short. So we did put into our 24 budget, which you approved, up to 35,000 for a vehicle, and we've identified a vehicle through South Dakota State bid. We were originally looking at getting another Equinox, I received word a week or so ago that there was no allocations for that because of the auto worker strike out there or something, so we were not able to get the Equinox. He did offer that he could probably get the Malibu, which the good news is, is it's $2,000 cheaper than the Equinox, so we're moving forward with the request for approval when that vehicle comes in, that it's pre-approved, so we can take a check to pick up.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment on this item? All right, I turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Karski.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, congratulations on the staff person, I know historically, it's a long process to go through all the certifications.
We've been very blessed, our last.
Last three of them?
Five hires have surpassed the state exam qualifications and certification, and it seems to get faster and faster and faster, I don't know what's going on, but they haven't, the coursework has gotten harder, and they're just, we're getting quality candidates, and really through the pools of applicants when we have them, we've had some good, good applicants, and they're really showing their worth, so.
Okay, congratulations on that, just wanted to mention that, and Chris had come to me earlier in the year about trying to replace the vehicle, and maybe it comes before or after January 1st, I encouraged him to wait till we knew that it would come for the 2024 budget cycle, so I will make a motion to approve this purchase.
Second, Ed.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. It takes us to item nine, which is to authorize the chair to sign the following Old Courthouse Museum annual lease agreements.
Good morning, Commissioners, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sioux Land Heritage Museums. This is an annual lease agreement, actually two separate ones, one with the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society for space that they occupy on the second floor of the Old Courthouse Museum, and a second separate lease with the Minnehaha County Historical Society, they occupy some space on the first floor of the Old Courthouse Museum. Both these organizations are private nonprofit corporations, they occupy county space, we have traditionally provided that to them free, and to approve these leases and authorize the chairman to sign them, it requires a unanimous vote of the commission for each separate lease. Any questions?
All right, any public comment on this item? All right, Commissioner Karski.
This is an annual deal, fully supportive of it, you know, just something struck me as you're doing the presentation, we have the Old Courthouse Museum, can we come up with a new name, can you have a competition and rename the Old Courthouse, maybe something more creative, I'm just putting that out there for you.
Okay.
Probably hadn't thought about it, it's always the Old Courthouse.
No, no, yes, it's been, it's one of the old courthouses, I guess.
Just putting that out there for you, Bill.
Good thought.
Any other comments? I think the first item would be the lease between Minnehaha County and the Sioux Valley Genealogical Society, any questions on that one or comments? Now I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, and then the next item would be the lease between Minnehaha County and the Minnehaha County Historical Society.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much for coming. All right, that takes us to item 10, which is the first reading to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for rezone number 23-07. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, your planning director. Today is the first reading and a request to authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for rezoning request. This is a parcel of property that's located at the northeast quadrant of the Renner exit, and it contains slightly under five acres, it's an expansion of the commercial area that's up there, the property directly to the south is zone C commercial, and the property to the west across the county highway is zone commercial, so I have a couple of slides for you to show you basically the property, there isn't existing residence there, they're looking at redeveloping that, so this is the subject property, it is on our, a county highway, it's at the, you can see the interstate there as well, the property directly to the south is zone C commercial, and there's large, several buildings for storage. So this is the house, you can see the owners have decided that the house, instead of, it is, I guess, in need of some repairs, they've decided that it's better suited for commercial property requesting to rezone that. It was at the Planning Commission last Monday, a week ago yesterday, and Planning Commission recommended approval, to approve the rezoning request unanimously, so I would ask that you set the hearing date of November, sorry, December 26th at 9:00 a.m. in front of this board, and that would be the second reading and possible final adoption, I would stand by for any questions you have.
Any questions for Scott? Any public comment here today on this item? All right, hearing none, I turn it to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Move to set the hearing date for December 26th.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is a briefing on the jail walk-in warrant program. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Warden Mike Mattson with the jail. Here today, just giving a briefing, we are doing a special event with our walk-in warrant program on December 8th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and December 9th from noon to 4:00 p.m. We're asking for people to look at the GOT warrants website, and if they have an outstanding Minnehaha County warrant, come into the jail front desk area, and you can participate in the walk-in warrant program with the $25 fee waived, so it's no money upfront to take care of the warrant, and you'll be scheduled a court date, so we're hoping that we can get some warrants addressed prior to the New Year.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the warden? Commissioner Benega.
I just have a question, I heard a number of, it's been a few months ago, can you tell me how many warrants we have outstanding?
I'd be taking a guess. Chief Deputy Gromer.
A lot.
It's amazing how many, the number I heard, I don't even want to repeat because I thought it was fictitious, but it's huge.
Yeah. Commissioner Karski.
No question, I guess, we saw this, I think, when we were down in Pima County, was it, in Arizona, Tucson, a very similar program.
I was not on the trip, I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
It is similar to what the courts are doing right now, and was kind of inspired a little bit by the court program that is based on the Pima County program.
And I think it's a great program, the low-level stuff that, I mean, you're pulled over and all of a suddenly, if you're pulled over and you have one of these warrants on you, are you arrested, are you cited, what happens?
It depends, it very well could be arrested for it, it depends on what kind of warrant it is.
Okay, so avoid the hassle and go in, get your court date, show up and be done with it.
Yep, get it cleaned up before the New Year.
Yep, there you go.
Commissioner Blainberg.
Thank you. Can you tell me the difference between this and the warrant resolution court that the court system is doing, do you know, where should a person go?
So the warrant resolution court was something different, they're taking people with a warrant, and they're resolving the whole case right then and there, this is different. This is our normal walk-in warrant program, so if they have a walk-in warrant, a warrant that's eligible, they normally come into the front desk, we charge $25, and they get scheduled for a court date the day after or two days after. We're waiving the fee basically for this, so they're still going to have a court date, and they have to go through that court process, but we're trying to get them in the door, get the warrant resolved as far as they're going to get a court date and be able to have the warrant addressed in court.
Okay, and then one follow-up question, if I could? The warrant resolution court, the way I understand it, is the only people that were eligible was if there was a crime that didn't have a victim, is there any exclusions to this program? Can anyone with a warrant of any type walk in?
We did a flyer, I attached it to the briefing, and we've posted it on social media, not all warrants are eligible. Not all warrants are eligible. We're looking at fail-to-eappear warrants, bench warrants, petty offenses, class one and class two misdemeanor arrest warrants, possession controlled drug warrants, most class six felony warrants, not including any sex crimes, domestic violence or stalking cases. Some civil and criminal child support warrants are eligible and juvenile warrants are also eligible.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kiple.
Madam Chair, I'll just note one other aspect here as we're building on some early success in that warrant resolution court. I know one of the things we're talking about is that's been a night court on a weekday. And I see that this has a Saturday opportunity. So just as we're trying to reach different members of the community that have different scheduling applications, trying to make this as easy and upfront as possible for people. So I appreciate this being an opportunity to resolve some of these cases. So thank you.
All right. Public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I appreciate you coming today. I really appreciate you guys being creative and thinking, as Commissioner Kiple said, of different options to reach people to try to make the process work as smoothly as possible for folks.
Absolutely.
It's a good New Year's resolution to get your warrant taken care of, so. All right, thank you very much. That takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign an MOU between Minnehaha County Jail and the South Dakota Department of Health. Once again, Warden Mattson.
Warden Mattson again. This one, I'm seeking authorization for the Commission Chair to sign the proposed memorandum of understanding between Minnehaha County Jail and South Dakota Department of Health STI program for the purpose of providing services to incarcerated individuals in Minnehaha County. This MOU is simply formalizing what we've been doing historically for a number of years. We allow the Department of Health to come in and interview people that they identify as people with contact tracing or such. So we're continuing our partnership with them. This is also in connection with that 340B program that I'm trying to get off the ground and running. So this is another piece of that puzzle.
Any questions for Warden Mattson? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, I would entertain a motion then.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. It takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to approve the extension of retention bonuses. Carrie Dever, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm here to request your approval to extend, extension, or retention bonuses. You might recall back in January of 2022, we started having discussions about offering retention bonuses to select positions in the Sheriff's Office and JDC. The bonus that was approved was a $1,000 bonus at nine months of service, every nine month increment up to three years. We've had limited time to collect good data, but I can tell you we saw marked reduction in turnover during the first quarter that we offered it. Might be partially due to the salary increases which were approved at that time, too. I can tell you that there are other indicators that seem to show that it's working well. I can also share with you that unfortunately, turnover rates in those areas still tend to be high. And those are all areas where the cost of that turnover is significant as well. Chief Deputy Gromer is here to speak with you as well if you have questions about the program. But ultimately, we're asking for your approval through 2024 as well. Susan Beaman is also here about the ARPA funding. You might recall that currently, the program is being funded through ARPA. We're confident that it will still be an eligible expense through 2024 as long as grant funds are available.
All right, thank you. Any Commissioners, any questions? I didn't know, did you want to come forward and say anything?
Jeff Gromer, Chief Deputy with the Sheriff's Office. Obviously, we support this program. It's pretty key in our recruitment efforts. I'm very happy to say recruitment in both the jail and the patrol division is going very well at the moment. As we've seen historically, though, that tends to come and go. It's just a very competitive market right now in law enforcement. When you look around the area, there's multiple agencies that are offering similar retention bonuses. And this is one piece of our retention and recruitment program that we try to implement. We do other things. Obviously, the salary increases a couple of years ago really helped. We do a lot with our scheduling. The jail staff, the administrative staff at the jail does a lot of recruitment, trying to keep these positions full. And this really helps us provide that offer to fulfill those needs. So, thank you.
Because Commissioner Benega.
Jeff, do we see anybody that's from the larger cities in the region? That from Minneapolis, Kansas City, whatever, Fargo, come to Sioux Falls to apply for jobs?
We have had some employees that have come from other parts of the country. I don't know if it's specifically to larger cities, but we do see some people moving to the area, looking for some of these jobs. These retention bonuses, they help with that? I mean, it's offering, it's offering these folks an extra little incentive to move. Many of them that are going to be moving from a larger metropolitan area or many other states, they're going to take a pretty significant pay cut to come, just cost of living. They've probably been in their industry, whatever industry they're working in for a while. So this does help us offset that a little bit for some of those people that are looking to move here or going to be experiencing a pay cut to come into our industry rather than wherever they were working before. So it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move for approval.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is to consider a motion to approve an extension of COVID sick leave. Carrie.
You might also recall this program, which was implemented in near the same timeframe as the retention bonuses. COVID sick leave has been offered by the county in recognition that we currently have a paid time off program. COVID sick leave allows employees to take this leave for a COVID-related reason under this program instead of utilizing their paid time off. It's been beneficial considering some of those turnover rates that we've been talking about. A lot of our staff are new and haven't had much time to accrue PTO. And when we're following CDC guidelines and asking them to isolate if they have COVID, it's one way to help them, provide them with some paid leave benefit. You might recall, too, that this is also funded currently by ARPA. Our request is to extend this into 2024 and through 2024 unless CDC guidelines change, in which case we would reevaluate it. Our hope is that those ARPA funds would continue to be available to fund it through 2024 as well.
Questions for Carrie? Carrie, just as a point of clarification, the CDC guidelines still require five days of isolation if you test positive, correct?
Correct.
And this leave is only available if somebody proves that they had a positive test.
Correct. We do require that they show proof that they've tested positive. Or if they're staying home for a child who's really young, that we have proof of that or test result.
Okay, thank you. Anyone for public comment on this item? Seeing none, I turn it over to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the extension.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kiple.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. You get to be up here for a little while.
Yeah.
All right, that takes us to item 15, which is a discussion to consider the 2024 elected department head salaries.
This is your annual discussion about pay for elected officials. You might recall that we talked about this during budget hearings as well. Every year at this time, you're preparing to look at a resolution for the upcoming year to set salaries for your elected department heads only. The Commission discussion happens in early January. For this discussion, I would look, I'm looking for feedback for you or from you on a couple of different areas. The resolution includes a base salary. And that information is there to help anybody who's interested in running for office to know what the minimum salary would be if they were elected. And then also salaries for the individuals who are currently in office will be continued into 2024. Typically, I will give you the same documents that you see attached today. One is the data from our comparable entities. So you can have an idea of what entities near the size of Minnehaha County are applying for those elected roles. I can have you go down just a little bit, Trish. And you should be seeing a chart right underneath this that summarizes that data for you. So if you just go just a little bit further. Just as a reminder, that first column is highlighted in light blue because you're looking at 2023 data. The next four columns gives you our comparable organizations data. The two columns that are highlighted in the darker yellow give you the average salary of our comparable entities for each of those elected positions for 2023. So again, I want to stress you're looking at 2023 to 2023 data. Some of those organizations pay their elected officials based on a salary range. If that's the case, I'm also giving you the average base salary to the average range max in the light columns. So you can see, we have some comparable entities that are paying a range for state's attorney and sheriffs. The ones that you see NA, it's because none of our comparable entities are paying those elected officials based on the salary range. The midpoint average column that's highlighted for you is the average 2023 salary or midpoint, combined midpoint, for those positions in our comparable entities. The purpose behind this is to just give you a sense of what those other entities are paying. Remember that they're having conversations this time of year to set the 2024 salary, so we don't know what they're intending to pay for the upcoming year. And also remember that this, this tends to have changed dramatically depending on if somebody was newly elected or if it's been in their office for a number of years. The other chart that I provide you with is below. This gives you a comparison to where your elected department heads are in comparison to your appointed department heads. Your elected department heads have been highlighted in gray here because I want to point out that what we're trying to do is give you comparison to 2024 salaries. So the salaries for your appointed individuals are what they will be earning in January of 2024. Whereas, of course, your elected officials is still the 2023 salary, just to give you a point of comparison. The last chart we have attached for you below this is a comparison of the 2023 salary for your elected official department heads compared to what their assistant department head level position would be earning in 2024 again. So it gives you a sense of what those individuals will be earning in 2024 in case you want to consider that as part of your decision in setting 2023 salaries. That's the information I typically give you. I know that this is a difficult decision each year. These are some of the factors that you consider. If it's helpful, during the budget process, you did set aside 5% just to save room in the settlement or the payroll budget for it. But of course, there have been times in the past where you'll give more or less depending on the situation, so. And usually, if you choose to give more, that's absorbed through salary savings throughout the year.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Carrie, the elected and appointment, appointed department head summary screen. Can you show that one up there? That one right there.
Okay.
So the 1124, that's if we didn't make any changes or that's at 5%?
That shows you the salaries your appointed department heads will be earning in January 2024 compared to what your elected officials are making in 2023. So I can't give you an apples-to-apples comparison, of course, since you haven't set the salaries for 2024. But it gives you a point of comparison in case you're wanting to maintain some sort of equity or want to make sure that the people are falling within a certain range.
Okay. So the, the gray, the gray ones, those aren't showing a raise for?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not showing the, the 5% we budgeted for or any other amount? That's if we just didn't, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Public comment. Is there anyone for public comment on this item?
Good morning, Leah Anderson, your county auditor. And you'll recall last, or earlier this year, in January, I came forward to talk about salaries. But I had missed this opportunity a year ago because I was busy with my other job. So my fault for not paying attention, I guess. I wanted to talk about a few things. One, the resolution language. It seems as if the language regarding the appointed to fill officer positions has changed depending on the situation at hand. In resolution 20-79, there was no mention of appointed officers. Then in 21-67, it was added to section two, which is the portion that talks about elected officials. And then in 22-43 and this current proposed resolution, it has been moved to section one under base salaries. As I had mentioned previously in the year, my predecessor, who was appointed, had a starting salary that exceeded the base salary by 32.1%. During his 26 months serving the county, he received total increases after that of about 20%. He started at 114,400 and left at 137,529. So this does tell me that you recognize the importance of the county auditor and that it's a very complicated position. Also, in resolution 22-43 last year, there was an increase of all elected official salaries of 14.5%, which was to reflect the previous pay matrix adjustments and to bring department head, elected department heads above their assistants. The base salaries at that time did not change at all and they haven't changed since 2021. In the chart that Carrie showed with the assistant department head levels with the expected salary at 11, effective 1124, my assistant department head will be at just under 120,119,101. And if my salary was increased by the proposed 5%, it would be 93,693. Not that county pay is based on performance, but I do feel that I have proven I am performing well in my position. And while we may have different opinions and, at times, I am serving the people of Minnehaha County with complete dedication. And no matter what my salary is, I will continue to do that. So my ask is that you just consider that the prior 14 and a half percent increase that everyone, one received last year, except for the base salaries, is considered as well. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Morning. My name's Larry Fosson. I'm with the Calhoun Way Church out by Hartford. And I didn't really plan on doing this, but I was just looking at some of the slides that you had up on the, on the board up there. And I noticed, and I may not have all these names of the, what was on the, on your screen. I may not have them right. But you had it compared to what they are getting now, all the ones up and down the screen. And then what a competitive one, I think it was, competitive salary was. And when you look at it, just from a layman's standpoint, and you look at it and you see that one individual is getting, in this case, it was $30,000 more. And then you get a couple of other people underneath there that are getting, like, say, $14,000 less than what the competitive is. It doesn't seem fair. I mean, and, and in the particular case that I am thinking about is, I've known Leah for 25 years. I've worked with her. And her expertise and what she's worked in is a good thing to bring to what auditors need to have. And she has that. And I would, I would ask that from a layman's standpoint, when we look at the things that you're doing and the pay that you give, that it should be even across the board. And I don't mean that it should be the same pay, but it should be even. If this is what the other type of, or people that are in the same type of position get, then it should be that way pretty much across the board. And I didn't see that. So I would just suggest that as if you're going through this and you're making your decisions, that you try to make it equitable across the board. Because fair is fair, right is right.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Cindy Meyer. I want to just say I concur with the points that Leah brought up. I concur with the points that Larry brought up as well. And I just want to remind the Commission that Leah does have 30 years of a And I just want to remind the commission that Leah does have 30 years of accounting and auditing experience, which is very closely aligned with the duties of the job and more closely aligned than the prior auditor head. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Gary Meyer. The presenter brought up that the base salary is what the elected officials should start at. I don't understand why the previous auditor who was not elected but rather appointed was brought in at close to $30,000 more than the base salary. And he was given close to $17,000 raise after he was voted out. I concur with Leah. She's working for the people. She's doing a very hard job. She has 30 years of accounting experience. And I think something and compared to what the charts that were shown to what the average should be making for competition, I think that position is needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? On this item, okay. I will turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Karski.
Madam Chair, this is just a briefing. It's not an action item today, but I would suggest that we don't have a meeting next week and give the commission time to maybe do some thinking on this and consideration because equity and parity is important. You know, time in the position, et cetera. There's a lot of things to consider. So I'd look at maybe bringing this back for formal action on our December 19th meeting.
19th is our next meeting, I think.
Two weeks from today must be December 19th.
Yep. Any other comments on that? All right, I think that makes sense. I think we'll just have this on the agenda on the 19th and we can discuss it further and give you direction at that time.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 16, which is a briefing on the Proposed Update to Policies and Procedures Manual on Physician Authorizations. Carrie Dever.
More recruitment and related discussion for you today. You may recall that you have a section of your policies and procedures that talks about when department heads can hire staff above the amount that they have allotted in their payroll budget. And there are certain exceptions, a little overlap when people are bringing someone on to take over a vacancy. And then there's some language in there that allows something that we've talked about is over hires. For example, in the jail, knowing that there is a level of turnover, we allow them to hire ahead, knowing that there's probably going to be additional turnover. Before you today is a request to extend that language to allow over hires in a few other areas. The first request is to add one over hire authorization in the juvenile detention center for juvenile correctional officer. And that, of course, has to do with the level of turnover they've been experiencing in the past few years. The next two requests are for attorneys. These are entry level attorney positions. We're requesting your support to authorize two over hires in the state's attorney's office and two in the public defender's office. You might recall when you've authorized over hires, there's still a guideline for department heads that they need to manage their payroll budget in such a way that they stay within the authorized dollars for the year. But this gives them a little ability to plan ahead for turnover that they're anticipating. You may have one or two department heads. I don't know. State's Attorney Hager, if you want to make any comments.
He looks like he's dying to make comments.
Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. Thank you for a chance to talk with you on this issue. You think it's my first time up here. I think this is a good thing on multiple levels. Certainly, we have constantly seen turnover in these offices. And so this gives us a chance to be better suited to continue to serve the public with that turnover that is happening. I think that that turnover can be viewed as a respectful thing as we see other law offices, other government entities wanting to hire the individuals that we have working in the county. Doesn't always feel like a good thing, but we can be happy for them when the US Attorney's Office sees quality individuals working on the defense side and the prosecution side and say, hey, that's that's the type of person we want in our office. And so we've seen that happen over the past few months and that's a good thing for those individuals. It always leaves us with cases to shift around. But I also think that this presents us with an opportunity to be competitive at the right time for individuals who are looking for jobs. We've always kind of struggled to find that right hiring rhythm with clerks, new grads. They're just looking for jobs at different times than our openings often allow. And so this allows us to be competitive there. We're always looking for good applicants. So if it's not that timing for those individuals, this allows us to recruit and hopefully hire and retain good people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for state's attorney, for Carrie? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, I'll turn it over to the commission. I personally would just like to applaud Carrie and the department heads. I mean, we're all in this competition for good talent and we're looking for good talent on behalf of the citizens of Minnehaha County. And I think that these are creative ideas for ways to address that. Commissioner Karski.
I concur. And you know, as a member of the Public Defender's Advisory Board for the last seven years now, you know, we understand the struggle of both the state's attorney, the public defender, the public advocate. And it's the timing. I mean, truly it is. Our hiring timing and our budget doesn't coincide with these young people getting their degrees and entering the workforce. And we got to be flexible. And then in the jail level and the JDC, I mean, there's turnover. You have 200 plus employees there that you, this isn't really a budgetary impact and it just makes sense to proceed this way. So I'm all in favor of it. In fact, I'd make the motion to approve it.
This is actually just a briefing, I believe. I think the whole handbook is coming forward later.
That's correct. Anything that's handbook related is our intent to give a briefing one week and then ask for approval at the following meeting.
All right, any other questions for Carrie? Okay, that takes us to item 17, Another Briefing on a Proposed Update to the Safety Manual.
The safety committee works very carefully to identify safety issues and concerns and address anything for the county. Over the past couple of years, of course, communicable disease has taken more of a highlight. And we realize that unfortunately, we're missing a section on that in our safety manual. So our request for you today is to consider supporting an update to the safety manual about communicable diseases. If you're supportive of this, we'll bring it back for your approval at the next commission meeting. A gratitude out to the safety committee who looked at this language and proposed it.
Any questions for Carrie? Anyone for public comment on this item this morning? Nobody who wants to comment on communicable diseases, huh? All right. Well, I appreciate you bringing that forward. It's something that I think a lot of employers are looking at as we've seen the changes that we've and the fact that, you know, there's always going to be issues and we need to have a policy in place for how to deal with them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 18, which is to consider a motion to approve the 2024 retail on and off sale Wine Insider License Renewal Application. I tried to talk slowly so Kim can get there. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. We have received the final two retail on and off sale Wine Insider renewal applications from license holders outside of municipalities. These have been reviewed by the state's attorney, planning department and sheriff's office. No concerns or objections were raised. Both of the establishments are listed below on the memo and they have not had any violations in the past year.
All right, any questions for Kim? Any public comment on this item? Turn it over to the commission for a motion.
Move to approve, second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to item 19, which is to authorize the chair to sign a resolution approving the final inspection and accepting ownership and jurisdiction of Slip Up Creek Road from Mapleton Township. Steve Groan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. This was a two-year-long process that I think everybody is satisfied with the final results for this project. We went through our final walkthroughs with Veterans Affairs and Stockwell Engineering. Recommend that we accept the final inspection and take ownership of Slip Up Creek Road. And we're pretty excited to have that project completed.
Thank you. I think a lot of people are excited to have that project completed. It's great. Any questions for Steve? Anyone for public comment on this item? All right, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, go ahead.
Move approval to authorize the chair to sign the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blyenberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that takes us to item 20, which is a briefing on the Bridge Inspection Review. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groan, Highway Superintendent. Per the South Dakota DOT requirements, we are Chris Brozek, our Bridge Engineer with Civil Design, will summarize his findings from this year's bridge inspection program. We met with Chris last week and went through all the bridges that were inspected this year. We've identified five bridges that we feel make good candidates to apply for the state big funding, three preservation projects and two replacement projects. So you'll be hearing more about those later on.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Brozek, Civil Design Inc. in Brookings. Okay, perfect. I'm gonna get this a little easier for you guys to see. So this past summer, Minnehaha County contracted with Civil Design Inc. to conduct bridge inspections throughout Minnehaha County. This year, we inspected 108 of the total 197 bridges on your guys' infrastructure system. 107 of those were existing structures. Two of those 107 went through major rehab as part of Bridge Improvement Grant projects. Both were completed this year. Actually, one was was just reopened to traffic yesterday and I'll touch on that briefly here in a minute. And then we also had one new construction of a new bridge that was constructed just west of Tri Valley School on Highway 118. As a reminder, all the bridges that we do as part of the bridge inspection process through MBIS in the state are any bridge that's over 20 feet in length, any bridge or box culvert that's over 20 feet in length. Bridges are generally inspected every two years. Some are inspected on a 12-month frequency if they're in poor condition or there are certain requirements that constitute the need for a yearly inspection. And then there are a few structures out there as well that are inspected less frequently on a 48-month interval. Those are generally box culverts that meet certain criteria. And then as Steve mentioned, we met with the Minnehaha County Highway Department last week to go over our findings and summarize our results. Here's a map. It's a little hard to see, but generally just highlighted the structures throughout the county that we hit, a lot of them being west of I-29 and maybe another quarter or so that were on the on the east side of I-29, which is generally how the county's broken up for the inspection cycle. As I mentioned, 107 structures were re-inspected this year in 2023. Of those 107 structures, 11 of those currently have a weight restriction on them. We did identify four structures that we do recommend planning for future replacement. The good news is of all the structures we inspected that have a load posting, we didn't have to reduce any of those load postings. And all structures that currently can handle legal load limits are able to keep at legal load for the next couple of years as well. So that's the good news to take away from our inspection findings this past year. We do also try to identify some structures that, you know, might not be ready for replacement yet, but we're keeping an eye on and haven't necessitated the need for a weight restriction. But just some particular structures that we may be looking now on a yearly inspection to keep an eye on and be more diligent about planning for future replacement when that time does come. Couple of those structures that I've identified are one being on County Highway 114, about four miles east of Baltic, where we're starting to see some deterioration of that continuous slab structure. And then the second structure being on La Mesa Drive, just west of the Sioux Falls city limits or just southeast of Ellis. Some longitudinal joint deterioration that we're keeping an eye on as well. But again, as mentioned, both of these still safe for legal loads, but we're just keeping a closer eye on those for for future planning. We also, as I mentioned, had three structures that went under either a full replacement or major rehabilitation. The first structure on the left is a structure on County Highway 118, just west of Tri Valley School. This structure was completely replaced due to the condition of the existing structure and the need for it to be posted a few years back. And so the county went through a replacement process. And this past summer, the contractor was able to successfully replace the bridge with a 73-foot pre-stressed concrete girder, single-span bridge. Overall, few little delays in the in the material procurement, but overall turned out very well. The the second bridge and the third bridge identified here, both are existing structures that had pretty extensive issues with the deck that necessitated the need for a full deck replacement as well as some repainting of the steel girders and some other preservation type work to extend the service life of these structures and being able to utilize Bridge Improvement Grant funds that were previously approved in order to complete these projects. The second bridge here identified was just south of Sherman on Highway 103. That started last year and contractor had some issues, wasn't able to successfully complete that that bridge. And so they were able to complete the remaining work this spring. And that was completed, I believe, towards the end of June. And then the second and last bridge here that went under major rehab, that was on County Highway 130, about two and a half miles north of Brandon. And that just actually was reopened to traffic yesterday. And so happy to have some favorable weather for the contractor to be able to complete that that job. Meaning remaining work is mainly just some punchless items and some cleanup. Lastly, as part of our inspection process, we also provide a detailed inspection report for each bridge to the county. And then we also do more or less a summary sheet that condenses all that information into just a few pages to more easily identify, you know, the big ticket items and the issues that go along with that. And so we went through that with the county department, highway department, and identified the major, major items that need to be addressed as well as future planning for any, any future rehab or, or future structure replacement within their capital improvement plan. With that, I, I don't have anything else. I'd gladly take any questions that you guys have for me.
Any questions for Chris? Any public comment on this item? My takeaway from this is always that we're, we're in good hands. We're keeping an eye on what we've got in our inventory and we're being proactive on using your recommendations to seek state money when it's available and replace bridges and repair them as needed. So I really appreciate the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 21, which is a briefing on the 2023 County Services and Funding Summer Study. Tyler Klatz spent hours and hours and hours keeping track of this for us. We appreciate it.
Pretty close. Tyler Klatz, Commission Office. So as you may know, the legislature authorized a summer study to look at county funding and services in 2023. That group met four times over the summer to look at a variety of things, including jury fees, indigent person, medical assistance, elections, veteran services, criminal defense costs, court costs, cybersecurity costs, mental health holds and a lot of the things that didn't make it to the, to the final cut. Ultimately, what they proposed was a selection of 11 bills and two resolutions that they proposed to the legislature's legislative's executive committee to move forward with. So what I wanted to do today is kind of go over those. And just to keep in mind, as we look at these, the information presented is based on the draft legislation that was written. Keep in mind that draft legislation is just draft legislation. The odds of it changing are higher than you probably, than people probably think. So don't get too attached to any one specific set of bills. Before we get into that though, just for everyone's kind of general knowledge, what Minnehaha County faces, 88% of our general fund expenses are allocated towards statutorily required services. Of that. Of that, 69% of our general fund expenses actually go to law enforcement, courts, and legal services. How we pay for those things is with property taxes primarily, and we are capped at a 3% or the CPI, whichever is less, plus whatever growth we may have in a given year, which makes it difficult to obviously keep up with high inflation. And then finally, operational expenses. As our option to be able to keep up with those growing expenses, the county takes an opt-out from the property tax limitation. That opt-out number has traditionally, or historically, I guess, been around 20% of our operating fund. Going into fiscal year '24, it'll be 24% of that operational fund. I won't read the recommendations, but as I mentioned, there was 11 bills recommended and two resolutions. As we go through this, the star on each slide indicates what the draft legislation essentially is proposing. First is an administrative fee for property tax administration. The county has around 76,000 different parcels, and we collect an apportioned taxes for 51 different entities. So we do a lot of work for a lot of these, not for these other entities, but in a way to get these entities their property tax dollars. We have around 40 staff that are associated with that process. The proposed bill would allocate a quarter of a percent, not to exceed $1 million, for the county to be able to essentially pay for that process. For Minnehaha County, we allocated $282 million in property taxes in 2022, I believe this number is. That would equate to around $700,000 in additional revenue. Another idea is administrative fee on tax increment finance districts. As an example, Rapid, the city of Rapid City charges around 20 grand, which is due by the fifth year of a certain, of an individual TIF project. Right now, there's 24 active TIF districts in Minnehaha County. This would be to provide the county with any sort of, with a funding mechanism to pay for the staff time allocated to a specific TIF project. Another idea is veteran service offices being state-funded. Right now, Minnehaha County has one veteran service officer managing around 4,000 active files. And our reimbursement for that position is capped at 5,000, around a little over $5,000. The proposal would be for the state Veteran Affairs Department to employ a veteran service officer for each county. For Minnehaha County specifically, it would be, we would have two, based on our population of veterans, and then an additional one for each 4,000 veterans over that. So my public school math tells me that that would be four veteran service officers doing the work of one right now. Emergency management being state-funded, this is a similar proposal. And the idea being to kind of consolidate, not consolidate, but to put regional managers of a four-county area across the county or across the state who would oversee the local emergency manager in each jurisdiction. Court-appointed attorney costs. This had a lot of attention, both from this group and the United Unified Judicial Systems Summer Task Force that looked at the same kind of topic. As a background, between 2018 and 2023, we had 142 cases that exceeded $10,000 in court-appointed attorney costs totaling around $3 million in expenses that the county had to pay. The proposal would reimburse the balance of a court-appointed public defender payment that exceeded $10,000. Next would be a proposal to redistribute the alcohol tax. Right now, counties receive 25% of that dollar amount. The remainder being 20 or 50% goes to the state, and then the other 25 goes to municipalities. This proposal would change it so that counties receive 50% of that money. Municipalities would continue to receive 25%, and then the state would actually be the one who decreases their allocation of that amount of money. Funding for mental health holds. The proposal allows or authorizes the Department of Social Services to be essentially responsible for all the costs related to transportation and anything associated with mental health holds currently. Right now, based on the Board of Mental Illness's numbers, our mental health holds have increased 50% since 2017. I can't speak to whether the costs have increased that same ratio, but it's safe to say it's a similar increase. Road district maintenance costs. This one, I would argue, our county doesn't have to worry too much about what initially the idea being to provide, to hold counties harmless if a township or a road district isn't doing their work to maintain certain roads. The proposal ended up being that townships would not have to bid their winter road maintenance contracts if they were less than or equal to $10,000. Right now, that number is quite low. I don't recall what it is, though. Cybersecurity costs. So right now, we're spending around $80,000 on cybersecurity infrastructure. This proposal would create a grant fund of $7 million that would be provided to local governments, and I think it includes both counties and municipalities to address a variety of cybersecurity needs. The County Collaboration Fund is another grant fund that would be set up of $10 million, which would encourage counties to pursue joint building, construction ideas to reduce expenses through identifying sort of duplicative processes that they could join together and to reduce the expense on both sides of those counties. The Obligation Recovery Center is a tool that the state has to recover costs that individuals may owe to the state. What it effectively does is, you know, maybe prevents them from purchasing a hunting license, for example, if they don't have their debts paid up. What this would do would be allow the counties to be listed as an entity which can use that state resource to try to recover, whether it be lean funds or any sort of other outstanding debt that may be owed to a county. State-operated tax, property tax system. This is a resolution that is being proposed. Essentially, you may remember earlier this year, we looked at a resolution to the South Dakota Association of Counties to propose the same idea where, you know, we have 66 counties doing the same job 66 different ways in some cases. This would encourage the Department of Revenue to develop a state-operated system so that counties may choose to use, so that they don't have to rely on their own internal, whether it's developing a system or purchasing it from an outside vendor. And lastly, this one is again one that the county doesn't have to worry too much about, or Minnehaha County, I suppose. Increasing the amount of federal money that's paid through the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Act. Right now, it is either not enough or not clear as to how much should be allocated based on U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service lands. And this is primarily an issue in the eastern side of the state. I think probably mostly northeastern side of the state. Right, the county receives about $35,000 in PILT money, so it's not a huge number that we'd be looking at, but it's certainly a number that would impact our bigger, our county's West River and the ones that have a lot of fish and wildlife land that they're not getting enough. They're not able to collect property tax on that land right now. So that would improve their revenue streams from that land. I believe that is my last. So the rest of the materials include the county funding and services, scope of study, the members, along with the, I believe, the final report, and the draft legislation is also included. If there's any questions, I can certainly try to answer those.
Lot of material. I appreciate it again. Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
If nobody has any questions, I just have a few additional comments. That's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go back to the second screen, Tyler. The challenges of county government. Yeah, there you go. Cost of public safety. Six years ago, when we did our Financial Action Network, I believe that was at 58% of a smaller number. Now it's 69% of a bigger number, and the financial people, the people that volunteered for that group, you know, showed us where this is really going to become a bigger and bigger part of our general fund expenses. The opt-outs, 20%, six years ago, 24% this year. Within four years, forecasted to be close to 30%, I believe. So, you know, public safety, being, having a very... Taking the right position on law enforcement and incarcerating the right people and that type of thing is not cheap. It's expensive. So these are some of the things that, you know, why we have to be so involved. Timing is everything, and I was fortunate to be the president of the state association during the summer study. And I have never seen, in my history of following county government, a better time for legislative action. We have a lot of interest from our, from the summer study, and I think this is, you know, the iron's hot, and I think we have a good opportunity to see some real progress in how the state takes a look at county governments and county funding. One of the things I got to do was for the legislative, I'm sorry, for the Indigent Legal Services Task Force is appoint by the legislation. As the president, I got to appoint three people to be members of that task force. I did a county commissioner from Stanley County, a county commissioner from... I can't remember the county, but he's a member of one of the tribes out there, former sheriff out there, now county commissioner. And the third one I appointed was our own Tracy Smith from our Public Defender's Office. From the input and the feedback I got, Tracy did a fantastic job. And I see the Indigent Legal Task Force recommendations making some real good headway into the cost of financing that and probably going to be a very positive first step into the whole public defender's legal system and how, as South Dakota is the only state that puts public defense back on the counties, I think we're going to see some positive changes on that. Tyler, you did a fantastic job of summarizing a lot of these things. You spent a lot more time than anybody else has, so I appreciate your effort on it. I'm going to tell our department heads, we have a lot of legislators locally. So if you're a department head and elected official, they're going to be looking to you for context to a lot of these, this legislation. It's pretty fascinating, the interest that the legislators have given to these. And they're signing up now to be sponsors and cosponsors of a lot of this legislation. So if you know your legislators, talk to them, give them input. It's, you can, you're the best expert that our legislators have, so. And also, if you're going to be doing that, give Tyler feedback. He's our contact person, so he knows, you know, who you're talking to and who's interested and the conversations that are going on. It's so important to keep those channels open and to make all that happen. So it's going to be interesting the next three months. So thank you, Tyler.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kipli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just note, we're expecting the governor's budget address today. I don't expect any of these concepts to be baked into that, but I mean, that obviously sets the stage for baseline information. What is this going to cost? Obviously, we're very interested to see what revenue projections are at the state level because I think cutting the sales tax from 4.5 down to 4.2, we would expect less state revenue. But a lot of these proposals ask for state revenue to balance out the county's lack of revenue. So I think we're going to be somewhat dependent on how far some of these proposals can go on how healthy the state's fiscal outlook is. Had a couple of conversations with some local legislators, so I definitely echo Commissioner Karski's thoughts of now is the time to start setting the stage with those conversations and see which ones had the biggest impact. The three concepts that jump out the most to me and that I'll probably be emphasizing the most would be some intersection between the Indigent Legal Defense Summer Study or Task Force, I guess it was called. And one of the proposals coming out of here feels a little bit like an insurance policy that might especially help smaller counties that if you get one really expensive case, could really hurt, especially a smaller county, but would obviously help us as well with some of our more complex cases over some limit, like $10,000. And then also just understanding, again, the role of the counties and where the incidence of different work lies. I'm interested in this administrative fee for property tax administration when all of that work falls on our equalization treasurer, auditor's offices, and we do that work essentially on behalf of other taxing authorities. That one's of interest to me. And then also, when we talk about public safety, a lot of those public safety issues come from the classic vice tax on alcohol is just 25%, the fair share of what that, the incidence of alcohol-related problems. So is that 50%? I think some of those numbers are a little bit arbitrary, but we need some proportion. And, but obviously, that eats into, again, back to my original point, it eats into the state's portion. So the state is going to obviously have to be willing to ratchet down their portion of the alcohol tax from 50% to 25% to give us, go, have us go from 25 to 50. So definitely some trade-offs, but obviously, I think it makes for some interesting conversations and puts what the challenges of counties are for our state legislators to consider. So I think this is definitely some positive direction, and I appreciate... This tool has already been a helpful, your PowerPoint has already been a helpful tool for me, Tyler, in having conversations with a couple legislators. So this is a great summary. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just echo the fact that we can all be really great resources to legislators. I know that the sheriff, for example, has been reaching out to the drafter of the bill on emergency managers, just to kind of make sure they understand the parameters of that and that, you know, ultimately, all emergencies are local. And so we want to just make sure that there's some opportunity for local control of that as well. And it sounds like that's been very, that conversation's been very well received. And that bill and likely others will be tweaked and adjusted before they actually come before and get introduced. So we have an opportunity here to provide good information so that the legislators have an opportunity to make the very best decision. And, you know, I would like to thank all the legislatures, along with Tyler. They spent a lot of time, did a really deep dive into the challenges that the county has. And so I also am just hopeful that this is going to have some meaningful impact this year. So thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 22, which is to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the Dakota Access Pipeline, urging the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to reissue that easement.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Just as by way of background, this past September, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers issued a draft environmental impact statement regarding a stretch of pipeline, the Dakota Access Pipeline, under Lake Oahu in North Dakota. Three of the five recommendations would ultimately cause the pipeline to cease operations or be located. Two of them would permit to, would permit the continued operation of it. The reason I'm putting this before you today is for Minnehaha County to provide a letter of support for alternatives, what they call alternatives, the options three and four, which would allow continued operation, the issuance of an easement. Because the continued operation of that particular pipeline, which has been in the ground here since 2017, we've been receiving tax benefits from it since then. If there was a decision to not reissue the easement, then that would certainly impact the county and our ability to collect those revenues, which have exceeded $2.5 million since we started receiving them in 2018. This letter of support would be sent to the Army Corps of Engineers, the Omaha District, by December 13th. And again, what it does is it provides the county's support for the issuance of an easement so that a currently operating pipeline may continue operating in Minnehaha County. We're not the only county in South Dakota that the pipeline crosses through. There are 12 others. Some other counties are doing, taking a similar action. So with that, I would offer it up for any questions and would encourage your support.
Questions for Tom before I open it for public comment? Is anyone here for public comment on this item? All right, I would turn it over to the commission for any discussion. I would like to say that really what we're doing here is just providing, kind of like we said with the legislators on the summer study, we're providing accurate information to the Corps of Engineers so that they understand what the financial impact is of that pipeline. We're not making, we don't have any opportunity here to make decisions about how safe the pipeline is. We didn't, weren't, you know, didn't have a lot of hearings about it when it came in. I don't think any of us were on the commission when that happened. Really, the point of this letter is just to provide accurate information about the financial impact and where that money goes from the county and what the impact would be if that revenue source was eliminated. At least, that's my perspective. Any other comments or questions?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the letter?
Second.
So motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, this is our opportunity for public comment. So if there's anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that wasn't on our agenda, this is your opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning. Gary Meyer, Minnehaha County. I'd like to make some comments on last week's agenda item on the precinct boundaries. At the commission meeting, eleven-twenty-eight, Auditor Anderson presented the new precinct boundaries. During the discussion, Commissioner Bender asked why there were two very small pockets making up their own precinct in that non-residential area. And I was surprised that nobody, that got kind of quiet in here after that. Well, the answer that Leah gave is because they are two male forwarding places. In precinct four sixteen, there are four thousand seven hundred registered voters. In precinct five sixteen, there are one thousand two hundred registered voters. Now, the commission didn't seem to inquire any further, but what I see going on here is there are two precincts here whose entire election outcome is decided by out-of-state or out-of-country voters, because it's very obvious that these voters don't live at these places. It's impossible. Some of these voters don't even live in the U.S. Some of these voters may not even exist. And since none of you bothered to look into this, the team at South Dakota Canvassing did. They took it upon themselves, and this was done some time ago, to do some call verification on these people that say they live at this address. Out of the calls, approximately ten percent of these people answered the phone, or we got an answering machine. That means ninety percent of the phone calls went nowhere. We don't know if they're even valid phone calls. And out of those phone, the ten percent we did get, I would say fifty percent admitted they did not live in South Dakota. They were registered here only for the monetary reasons. My point being is it makes me wonder how many male forwarding voters have an interest in influencing our laws, such as the marijuana laws, or how about the CO2 pipeline initiatives that may come up someday? The matter of voting fraud has been, that forwarding places have been brought forward to this commission many, many times, but it's being totally ignored. Filling out a fraudulent voter registration form and signing it is committing perjury, and yet the county does nothing to prosecute these people. The voters swear that they are living at the listed address, which is a male forwarding building. It's not possible they lived there. Certifying a fraudulent election is an act of treason, and I want to say this board knows we've got fraudulent voters, but they do nothing about it. I wish to point out that in the three years since the 2020 election, there has been not one shred of evidence provided proving that Joe Biden won the election. You'd think that in three years, they could come up with some proof to shut us up, but here we are.
Anyone else for public comment this morning? Okay, that takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? All right, no Commissioner Liaison. I'm always looking at you guys, and it's so funny when I ask that question, because everybody gets a very thoughtful look on their face. It's like, what did, what did we do the last week? I can hardly remember all the things we did. All right, any non-action commission discussion? All right, there will be an executive session immediately following the commission meeting for purposes of SDCL one twenty-five dash two, one, three, four, and six. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So move?
Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll now go into executive session in the training room next door. Commissioners will begin the executive session in, why don't we begin it at eleven forty, or at ten forty-five? Thank you.